Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council of Universal City, Texas. It is Wednesday, July 5th, 2023. It is now 6:32 PM, and I'll call this meeting to order and call for a quorum check.
Mayor Pro Tem Goolsby?
Here.
Councilmember Buck?
Here.
Councilmember Bowman?
Here.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Councilmember Najarian?
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Here.
Quorum, Mr. President. We shall proceed. The proceedings of the vacation will be given by Councilmember Vaughn. He'll lead us in the pledges afterwards, so please, everyone stand.
Dear God, we pray that we all remember that despite our differences in opinion, we are all striving to do the best for the city we all love to live in. Help us treat each other with respect and kindness. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its good republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening. It's a little cooler than it's been. I just came back from a vacation in Wisconsin, and it was really nice. As soon as we got off the plane back in San Antonio, we knew where we were. I think the humidity was higher than the temperature. Okay. This evening, we have one major topic of discussion. We do have a consent agenda, but the first thing I want to do, though, is put your eyes towards the screen here because we had three councilpersons who had the opportunity and plus a staff member, an opportunity to ride on the Universal City float during the Armed Forces Parade on Saturday, or Monday if you didn't get a chance, or Sunday. Sunday it was. Yes, look at, see the arms? Okay. Let's take a look at this short little video of our councilpeople and staff in action. It doesn't look like they had any fun at all. Fantastic. Well, you guys represented the city extremely well. Congratulations. Thank you. Fantastic. I tell Senator Mayor Ron Ervin all the time, you know, Senator, it's Military City, USA, but I tell him it's actually Military Cities, USA, because we're the watchdog of Randolph, and they know it, and they let us do it. So that's just a thing between Ron and I. Anyway, okay, let's move on to our items this evening. The first item is Consent Agenda. That's under Tab A. All matters listed are considered to be routine by council and be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. And I do have one individual, one councilperson, who has asked for item number C, Councilmember Bowman, to be pulled and treated separately. So we have items A and B. If anyone else wants to pull them, please let me know.
Luke, your proof.
Okay, my Schmidt. Councilmember Najarian.
Second.
And my Councilmember Buck. Any other discussion? Okay. Call for the vote then, please.
Just to be clear, it's...
We're pulling item C.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
Aye.
Councilmember Buck?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Goolsby?
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes, then we'll move on to item C that was pulled. It's a resolution. The City Council approving a project for Universal City EDC is authorized by Section 505158, the Texas Local Government Code, authorizing certain financial assistance to be used for target infrastructure located within the city of Universal City, Texas, and providing far and effective data.
So it's had a discussion, yeah.
Approved.
Yeah, we do, we'll take the motion, then we'll go. Councilmember Goolsby has made the motion. Second, my Councilmember Fitzpatrick. Discussion.
So I just wanted to put back out there that I'm against spending money on the temporary parking lot. The city has had tons of gravel parking lots that served a purpose for years. Red Horse Parking Lot was gravel forever. The field behind my house and in front of City Hall is literally still an unpaved, highly-used parking lot for the pumpkin patch. When it comes to fire truck safety, the fire trucks can easily park on either side of the road because this parking lot is so small. So to me, it seems pointless to spend such a huge amount on something that's temporary. The residents are against this huge expense, and I'm asking my fellow councilmembers to reconsider this huge, to reconsider this huge expense and at least get quotes for the cost of a gravel temporary parking lot before approving this tab for a cement parking lot. That's it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Jen?
Excuse me, did we decide on having that gravel? I didn't think it was, we were talking, it wasn't going to be gravel.
No, it's asphalt. I'm asking you guys to reconsider and possibly do gravel as opposed to a permanent asphalt.
Well, in your discussion, you said that, you know, we have plenty of gravel parking areas that we tend to anyway. This wasn't ever going to be specifically a gravel.
Well, she said that we couldn't do gravel because of the environmental or that it might be an issue, oil leaking into the ground and stuff was...
Correct.
Well, I'm just saying we have gravel already that has served us for years.
Okay.
But if this was gravel, I don't feel like it'd be any different from the other ones.
Yeah, and you would be correct in that assumption that since it wasn't ever planned on being gravel, I don't see what the point is now, for me, anyway. So, and there was one other point, but obviously put that in court.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All right, can we do the motion and a second? So let's call for the vote then, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Goolsby?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Buck?
Aye.
Councilmember Bowman?
No.
Councilmember Najarian?
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn?
No.
Sure, the motion does pass. Number 42. All right, let's move on now to our citizens to be heard. As you can see, maybe it's an opportunity. I guess we have the timer up there now. Four citizens to address council on issues or concerns. It's informative only. No council discussion or action will be taken. We really, really do appreciate your participation, though, and welcome everybody. There have been six of you that have signed up this evening, so I'll call you up in order that you signed in this evening. Please try to keep your comments down to three minutes because we definitely have a pretty long session tonight. So first person to sign up is Kim Eagleheart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kim Eagleheart, 736 Garden Meadow Drive. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, abundance of resources leads to waste. It does not matter if we're talking about water, electricity, gasoline, food, or the most precious of all resources, time, or what many consider to be the second most precious, money. Many years ago, my husband and I thought we had worked out our finances. He would give his entire paycheck to the household and keep his bonus check. But in the course of a few short years, as he moved up in the company, rather than giving him pay raises, his employer increased his bonuses very handsomely. It got to where he was keeping over half of his total income. Meanwhile, I was paying for the entire family's medical insurance out of my paycheck with not much left over for personal or household items beyond the necessities. Not surprisingly, he was not interested in renegotiating the agreement. Compared to 20 years ago, when the venue tax was first created, our city's sales tax revenues have skyrocketed, even after adjusting for inflation. And with the recent ruling that internet sales are taxable at their final destination, we are likely to see an even greater surge in this revenue stream. If you take no action whatsoever, the golf course and conference center, just like my ex, will be sitting pretty with far more cash than it needs and probably managing it in the way most people handle a abundance of resources. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, next individual signed up this evening, Mr. Richard Edwards.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Richard Edwards. I live on Trudy Lane. Tonight's discussion about the venue tax. I think we need to remember it's about the venue tax, and although it does involve the golf course, it's really not about the golf course. Whether you consider the golf course to be a profit center, I believe that when I see the receipts, or an amenity, which I think that's easy to see, I think what we need to consider is what percentage of the residents of Universal City patronize a golf course and convention center, or whatever we call it? Is it 5%? Is it 10%? Is it better? Because if it's an amenity, and I think that's more, that's more realistic what it is, it's benefit to the city, it's amenity, it's, you know, it's a place to go, things to see. How, how many of us actually really go to the parks or the library or take advantage of the dog park? Certainly not the majority of the people. So we're not going to do away with any of those. But at the same time, they're not being specially granted earmarked money. It's worked out in the budget. The council has its say. Emergencies come up. I'm sure we have an emergency fund to take care of that. So as far as the venue tax, as it was set up, was to pay for the boss to actually install and develop the golf course. This has been done. Yes. It needs upgrading. A lot of things need to be done, but I think that these things should be budgeted in, that the council should make decisions on them. They shouldn't be shackled to a venue tax earmarked specifically for the golf course. I think it should be treated equally as an amenity. I mean, obviously, it's going to require more funding, I would think, than these other items I've mentioned, but these are all things that make Universal City what it is. And I don't think any one of them needs to be specially earmarked, but rather should be deliberated every year and let the wisdom of our council decide how to best fund each and everything. All right? That way, the people who are tired of their tax money being funneled to the golf course can realize our tax money goes to the library, our tax money goes to the dog shelter, our tax money goes to all our parks, and it's short. These are civic projects. So it's not like anyone is getting any special consideration. We're looking after the good of the city for the best of the people who live here. And I think that's best done on a yearly basis through budgeting and wise and intelligent councilmembers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, next individual this evening, Mr. Ken Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Ken Metz. I live at 13410 Adonis. Over $17 million of Universal City's sales tax revenues have been dedicated to the golf course since 2004 because of the venue tax. Over the next 20 years, the city will give the golf course more than $40 million in sales tax revenues if the venue tax continues. The city has also given the golf course over $2.4 million in support using jail fund revenues that should be paid back from the golf course to the city. The golf course capital improvement needs presented by the city far exceed any potential profits of the golf course. They can't be met without venue tax funding. There are no audited financial statements of the golf course's operations. Therefore, nobody can confidently state that the financial status of the golf course. The council does not receive any regularly reliable financial reports regarding the golf course's operations. If the venue tax was eliminated, the city could give property owners at a minimum a 15% reduction in property taxes. The 2023-2024 budget for the golf course has many questions that need to be thoroughly discussed by council. Several councilmembers and city staff want the golf course to continue to receive venue tax money so it can stay viable. However, the decision whether or not the city should continue to dedicate 25% of its sales tax revenues to the golf course is a decision that should be made by the voters and not a handful of councilmembers and a few city staffers. I recommend putting the venue tax up for another vote. In reference to the handout here on the venue tax discussion, Slide 2, I find it amazing that it's taken over 20 years to implement the ballot language. The last bullet refers to the golf course as an investment. I don't think it's an investment that returns no money. Slide 3, should not avoid elections just because of the cost of an election. And Slide 4, priority 4 will never happen because of the golf course's needs. It will far exceed any amount of money the venue tax will be able to provide. What about past administrative costs not paid by the golf course from 2004 to 2023? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Metz. Okay, next individual this evening, Mr. Bernie Rubel.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Bernie Rubel, 635 Ball Ball. We, the city of Universal City and council, has given our city manager an inherited problem. Okay, the inherited problem is in part associated with the venue tax. Now, as hard as she's tried, and she has tried hard to bring things in line, to make essentially us free of venue tax use, venue tax use, essentially, it's been an arduous task. One of the, one of the problems that I see is that we can't buy our way out of this problem. We've got to resolve it. The councilmembers in the past, as early as 2020, essentially avoided looking at the language of the audit report saying there's a problem there. 2018, same thing. And now we're here again at a council meeting where essentially it is up to council to really resolve that resolved issue. I would recommend that a citizens committee be established to work with the city staff and overlook this. Furthermore, I recommend that a former councilman, Mr. Maxwell, would be an ideal person to head this group. Well, his background is actually phenomenal in this area. And basically, just as, just as a citizen's eye in order, in order to report to you things, I would prefer a town, I would prefer a town hall meeting so that essentially things can be put out for the residents. I just remind council that, you know, we have 13% unemployment rate. We've got approximately 15% that are uninsured. Mr. Najarian appreciates the fact that there's the other side, the other side of the hand that's not getting taken care of in the city because of his own personal, because of his own important personal history. Thanks. So we have, we have to understand that you guys are the typical tax collectors. You guys get to decide whether the widow is going to get taken care of or not. So I thank you very much for your time. Please remember the burden that you place on the city manager whenever you don't give guidance that are, that will benefit all people of Universal City. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, next individual this evening, Denise Thomas.
Hello, here at the City Council. My name is Denise Thomas. I live at 314 Colonial Road. And I'd like to thank you all first for listening to me the last time I was here about the overgrown grass in the front of our neighborhood. So I did hear from a couple of councilpeople, well, quite a few councilpeople, and I thank you all for that. And I did take all of the comments and everything back to our community, and they asked me to come back and ask if you could look at Portman's 370Q2022.
Could you repeat that for me, please?
And specifically, the part that refers to the fire marshal and their input on whether or not the grass is a fire hazard or a hazard to our community, because we believe that it is, and we'd like for the city council to reconsider that. And that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Appreciate it. Okay. Next individual this evening is Ms. Andrea Williams.
Hi, I'm Andrea Williams. I live at 9210 Granberry Pass. Sorry, I'm not a very good public speaker, so I'm a little bit nervous. I just wanted to voice my opinion. I think that personally, as a business owner in the area, that I would, I love the golf course, and I've been there many times and had great functions there, but I think maybe lowering the percentage and maybe spending that money on other aspects of the city, not completely getting rid of what we give to the golf course, but maybe lowering it would, that would be my vote on it. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it very much. Okay. Next individual this evening is Ms. Lisa Irwin.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I want to say first, my name is Lisa Irwin, and I live at 12814 Eldoretto. I want to say first, thank you for the job that you all do. I know it's a lot of work and a lot to be considered. What I'm here to say tonight is, I've lived in Universal City for seven years, and it has greatly impacted my family. And I'm here because the community that we have here is very special, and I believe that it's imperative that we try to work together in, and this is a small city, it's really imperative that we work together. In seven years, I have seen a lot of growth. I've seen good things happen here. I've seen all the, all the things, you know, the different venues and parks and splash pad and everything that's gone on, the library, everything they do, and I've been able to enjoy a lot of that, and I'm grateful, very grateful. And so I'm here because I just want to put a light on Universal City with my words. This is a very special place. I know that you all know that, that I have to say it. And I just want everyone to understand that it's imperative that we work together. And specifically about the golf course, that particular venue offers a lot to this community. It's not just the golf course. It's not just a place to have a party or, you know, whatever. That's a place that we come together, and that, that matters. That place offers a lot for families. It does. And so particularly for my family and others that I know, we really enjoyed living here. I'm going to be honest, I didn't want to move here because I had already chosen where I wanted to live, and we had to, we had to make a life change because we had a, had a mother come to live with us. So, and when I met a few people here, I didn't know anybody here. When I first met a few people here, I was very grateful for that, and I told them, huh, I have friends in Universal City now. This is fabulous, because all mine were out of the city. And so I just want to say, you know, that I'm grateful, and I want you all to hear just from a woman who lives here for seven years. My life has been changed. It has been. And specifically with people who work for the city, you guys that serve, the EMS people, I don't have enough words to say about them. I'm grateful, and I think we all need to remember something. You know, there's that African proverb, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want, you know, now I forgot it. Y'all know it? You guys know it? If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The individuals that signed up this evening speak to council. Would anyone else like to speak that didn't have the opportunity to sign up before? Please come on up, sir. Give us your name and address for the record. Let me get her.
Thank you for calling me up even though I didn't sign in and as an interested resident. Name's Billy Hill, 90.3 Phoenix. Happens to be on the golf course, but I don't play golf. I used to watch out all you idiots move that ball around, but I've grown an appreciation of Universal City. For 40 years, I've gone to church here on Pet Booker Road. 20 years ago, I moved here to that location. So, and being a business owner and a contractor, I've had the opportunity of working here for Universal City in many, in many aspects, but more particularly, I forget about that as a resident, I've grown a certain appreciation for Universal City to erase my stereotype that I had decades ago, including the police department and all other administration. I've recently gotten involved and as I'm trying to change the way I think and in my perception, I try to be more open-minded in many views, including what's on the agenda and what y'all are doing. I'm not smart enough to form an opinion on the golf course or the library or the parks or whatever else y'all want to try to do with the venue tax. And I feel that with 20,000 people that y'all represent, only a small percentage of them vote, and even a smaller percentage of that, is educated well enough to form an opinion, particularly if it goes to vote for the residents, you know, for a city vote. My vote's always been important, whether it be at Universal City or nationally, that I do the due diligence, that I have time and learn as much about those, those people such as y'all that have given all y'all's time and energy to run this city and this council. I meet with some of them personally, and Buck, and some of the old school. And that's, that's hard enough for me to form an opinion, an objective or even a subjective opinion, but that's my due diligence in order to pick y'all to represent me. And my personal opinion, as everybody is stating a personal opinion, that's what I think this process is about, locally or nationally. We're to pick a representative that we trust, that we try to do our due We're to pick a representative that we trust, that we try to do our due diligence in order to represent me when it comes to certain issues, whether they be legality, whether it be a golf course, whether it even be the venue tax. And that's my fault if I voted wrong. And whether all of y'all or one of y'all make a decision, that doesn't happen to be with my individual personal want or individual personal need. We said it in prayer to where we need to get together as a community and particularly as a nation to say, this objective, this purpose is for the team, the whole, the city. And who are we to sit back and think that we can make a decision or vote to help make a decision in splitting all this up when we don't have anywhere near the accessibility y'all do with past history that you need to consult in order to make a decision in current times and not just for the next year or the next two, but again, for the whole and for the city, the future. And if it pisses off somebody, some of us residents, well, then so be it. We'll just vote differently next election for those that rep us. So, I just want to get my, I'd say, humble point crossed to where I love the participation. I love all of the inputs that we can get from everybody here. And then, at the end of the day, it's up for y'all to decide. You're never going to please everybody. I've run small businesses, billion-dollar businesses, and the buck stops here. You call in all the resources you possibly can, and I would applaud all the money that's spent in professionalism and attorneys. And we're blessed to have Vaughn on here for the numbers. And then, when y'all pull the trigger, that's y'all's responsibility. So, sorry, but that's about it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Very good. Anyone else? Okay. Let's move on then to our items for today, our business. It's a no tab. It's the venue tax discussion, which is the main reason why obviously many of us are here this evening. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Turner. She'll get it all started off.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I did put this together as a small presentation for you, just to kind of remind everybody that I haven't been here before, where we come from, where we think we're heading, and some of the possibilities for the project. So, I'm going to start off. These are some of the slides that we had previously. We have a lot of information presented by numerous people, myself, local council, council members, residents. So, I just kind of went back to what I thought were certain slides that I put in here. And of course, the big question is, what is the end goal, right? Because this is what we don't know now. We've had lots of discussions. Generally speaking, I think from all perspectives, that really the end goal is to figure out how to get as much money as possible into the general fund or into other uses within the general fund that are allowed by law. And then, the second goal, I believe, based on our discussion, is that, you know, we need to include and maintain the golf course and the investment that we have. And then, the question is, is how do we do that? So, those are really the two end goals that we desire to use in this discussion. So, the question on the direction that we take is, what is the direction that we take? So, can we accomplish what we want without having to go to the expense of the election? I talk about it at the expense, and I appreciate you bringing this up. I'm not necessarily talking dollars and cents. You know, there is the dollars and cents to election, but that cost is split amongst many entities, so it's not just that. Kind of go back to what I'm going to talk about tonight, what are the emotional toil that we have on the city and the residents and the council and the staff? And how far are we willing to take that to get to where we want to go? And then, the question has to be, is will having the election compound that issue misinformation, disinformation, misunderstanding, lack of information? And how do we take a very complicated situation and wrap it into one or two sentences so that the average voter can understand the direction that we're moving in, or the end goal that we're trying to reach? So, that's part of the discussion that we're going to have. So, in that, what are the things that we have talked about, maybe it was two days ago, but really, what are the priorities when we're talking about the venue tax? And so, I'm just going to reiterate those real quick. Priority number one was the golf course interfund loan repayment, which is 1.9 million dollars. The question was to staff, is do we have the funds to pay them? We are near complete with the audit, and we believe we do have 1.9 million to pay back the interfund loan, and that will be using the venue tax proceeds. Now, then, the question's going to be, oh, what are we going to do with 1.9 million dollars? I have several recommendations I could make with it when that time comes. So, we'll come back when that, when that payment cost comes up. The second priority that we talked about was making the annual transfer of the venue tax to the general fund for the administrative work that is done on the venue project by non-golf employees. It's okay, you'll remember, the golf council said, look, if you're going to do that, you need to quantify it. So, we have as a staff been trying to quantify who works and does things for the golf course. Their hourly raise, how many hours annually a year do they spend on, and we extrapolated all of that out, and it came out that for 2024, we anticipated that would be 310,000 dollars. So, that would be an administrative transfer from the venue tax into the general fund. And for some of you that looked at your 2024 budget, you will see that that line is in there. The third priority was that the golf course repairs and improvements, I'm just going to skip over that for a second, and we'll show a little bit more detail. The fourth priority was to exercise council discretion in using the venue tax for parts and open spaces. I did put some language in here, but it's remember, the ballot language was very complicated, and it did refer to linear parks and open spaces. And the council has looked at that and then gave some more information on that. So, for the 2024 budget, we discussed the integration, but it's approximately 1.4 million dollars. One million of that is operational, and 425,000 of that is security parks improvements or park projects, which would be swings and concrete and things of that nature. The operating expense would be more of your equipment and your staff and your herbicides and your grass and irrigation and things of that nature. So, those are the four priorities. Now, I'm going to pop back to number three and talk generally of what we found out since we talked last time, the venue project upgrade and repair. So, I put these in rough order, ma'am, to return constructional load with carpet called the R O M. So, one of the things that we talked about was a huge hindrance for the golf course and the security risk is the upgrading of the fiber up to 200 megabytes per second. We're at 100 right now. Everything out there went slow. It takes longer to sign people in, takes longer to pay the bills, takes longer to process at the end of the night. And so, in the 2024 budget, you will see that we did put an item in there under the technology and telephone to increase the fiber from 100 megabytes to 200 megabytes. That's approximately 500 dollars. And then, also, the other issue that we have is all of the computers need to be replaced. There are 10 of them, and so, we did mention that in the 2024 budget, and that is approximately 16,000, 20,000 dollars for that one. So, we're looking at 30,000 dollars for those critical items right off the top. The second thing that we have been talking about, which is a priority, and it's a priority because it happens over and over and over again, and it seems to not have enough parking between golf, golf tournaments, happy hour, happy hour and wedding tournaments, and all of the other things that we have. I know that a lot of people have gone into what we call the overflow parking. It's not really parking on, it's just, you know, we've got some dirt back there, which for the golf course, they don't mind it so much for the weddings and for the happy hour attendees, you know, the guests, they don't want to be walking in there. So, we're anticipating that that probably should be done at the top also within the 2024 budget. Then, we have the discussion on the activities at the golf course and how there's a conflict between golf and golfers, wedding events and wedding attendees. So, I wasn't able to reach out to someone who, a pro level, did go out and kind of did a rough estimate or a rough sketch. We have all of that worldwide, where it could be placed, and what makes the most sense and things of that nature. So, they came back in a couple of days, and the recommendation was that the new pro shop and the cart barn need to happen first, because you can't make the kitchen bigger without getting rid of the pro shop, and you can't necessarily have the pro shop separated from carts because of the constant back and forth that they have to have and access to cart. So, that particular budget came out to 2.7 million. Again, that is a new building. It would be about 1,500 square foot pro shop, probably a 3,000 square foot cart barn, same building, because we already don't have enough carts, and we can't get any more carts, so we don't have anywhere to park them, and they have to be inside. And so, that was that one. That did not include FFA furniture fixtures and equipment, right? That is just a construction cost. Anticipated that if you decided to move over with that, you're looking at about six to 10 months for construction. I do want to caution on the budget for the pro shop and the cart barn, that these are just somebody off-the-top budget numbers based on a novel project that they have done and what they have paid for certain items for linear yards, square foot or something of that nature. And then, the event center remodel, which included expansion of the kitchen, new flooring in one half of the facility, inclusion of bridal area, expansion of the outside deck where most of the happy hour events take place, and things of that nature, that came to about 2.1 million. That did not include most FFA, and I say most because it did include some general costs for kitchen equipment, but it did take into consideration chairs and additional lighting and whatever lawn materials might be. So, anticipated that that particular remodel, once it got started, would take about four to six months. Now, I say that, all of that without having any official construction plan or hiring an architect or anything else. Again, I want to just everybody to understand, as to if only expert flying off the top of his head, one was an architect and one was a general contractor.
We shouldn't be trusting those architects, though. Just saying.
Well, the thing I understand is...
She agrees.
So, to most architects and general contractors, they put in these things called standard improvement, that's one way I would say we find. So, what did they not include in the estimate that they gave us? Material testing, which would be soil and things of that nature. Design fees, which usually runs about 15% of construction costs. Consultancy, just any third-party fees that they might have to have. We will review things of that nature. Self-service testing for boards and foundations. Repair or relocation of utilities, because obviously, everything's hooked up to the main building, and I'm sure they have to be, not facilities relocation, if you decide to add in any facility. Vegetation, meaning landscaping, that's just reports, which always have to be done. ADA review, which is always required. And of course, there's obviously they want any unforeseen conditions of anybody who's ever built a house or a building or been involved with any kind of construction, even if it's just doing a small project of your house, inevitably running something that didn't go right, and so, that hasn't been worked in either. So, that is what I have for this particular area. Oh, I walked in behind me. We have roads inside here. They're going to go ahead and just give you a little bit more information, and then after that, we'll open it up for discussion. And so, Mayor Bell, am I putting your presentation? Do you have it up already?
I have it up. Yeah. Okay. Um, hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Rose Kenneski. I'm here to my colleague, Clay Dillard. We are attorneys from the Hall, Kristen Birkin, the oldest public finance law firm in the state, and I'm a history librarian at the Bay Bar. Clay is your public finance specialist, and I'm a librarian on your team. I wanted to review some of the discussions we had in the past about 2002 election and the options that our government wants to give from a legal perspective. So, as I mentioned before, the ballot language from 2002 was actually much broader than the golf course and conference slash event center. It also included linear parks, open space, and related infrastructure. That term means a legal term of art defined by the government code, and it includes a wide variety of different facilities related to this project. It could be a store, a restaurant, a pro shop, road, sewage, things of that nature. The effect of this election is that the tax proceeds can be used to reimburse the interfund loan that the chairman mentioned earlier. The tax proceeds can be used to reimburse the general fund for any staff's time and efforts used to manage the venue project. The venue tax proceeds can be used for any of the other defined projects from the ballot language that are currently financed through the general fund, some things like linear parks, which I'll talk about in a moment. Importantly for future financing, when the golf course debt is paid off, the golf course and conference event center remain the venue project. If venue tax is allocated away from these projects, they still remain venue projects. And that's important because ad-hom property taxes may not be used to support the venue projects. Here's a call from the actual ballot government, meaning that if you use ad-hom property taxes to construct, operate, maintain, or renovate the venue project. And in this context, when I say ad-hom taxes, I mean very specifically, the ad-hom property taxes, you're talking about the test of property. There are some exceptions that you may know about from other cities. They're not applicable to us, but we wanted to mention them so that you know about them. This permission does not apply to units of parks and recreation systems, to watershed protection and preservation, and to certain hotel projects that are financed with hotel occupancy tax. Let's talk in a little bit more detail about the element of the 2002 ballot that the city has not used already, when it is using the same tax proceeds. And that is specifically open spaces and linear parks. The ballot language did not define those terms, so we give them their plain meaning. And in public finance, a linear park is well-understood as a type of park that is longer than its wide and is usually running along some sort of infrastructure or scenic byway, and is intended for recreational purposes. So, people are using it for logging, my complex, running. We do believe that you can use the venue tax proceeds for linear parks and open spaces. It's perfectly legally indefensible, but we did want to raise for you a small concern that there is always a risk that people from the 2002 election might consider that this was not within the scope of the original question. As an auditor coming in, I look at the plain terms of the language. I wasn't here in 2002 and don't know what was in people's minds at the time. So, what can we do going forward? It's perfectly legally defensible. But we did want to raise for you a small concern that there was always a risk that people from the 2002 election might consider that this was not within the scope of the original question. As an officer coming in, I look at the plain terms of the language. I wasn't here in 2002 and don't know what was in people's minds at the time. So what can we do going forward? Actually, you as the city council, I believe, could reduce or repeal any portion of the existing venue tax. I say any portion, but it needs to be influenced by [inaudible]. We, of course, we never let them know that you do that because if you did, you would lose that income stream and invite them to prompt some other taxing authority to move for the lesson before you did to fill the gap to get to the 2% cap.
To make sure what you're saying is that if we were to reduce it without reallocating the other portions of it so that we are below our 2% maximum, that is when another taxing entity could grab that remaining portion that we have reduced from, yes?
Yes.
Good. One to clarify, thank you.
As a council, you have the authority to reduce or repeal. You don't have the authority to re- or reallocate in your term.
So in other words, if we decide, if, if, if the, if the council here were to determine we wish to reallocate, that being to reduce, let's take an example, the venue tax by a quarter percent and replace it with a general revenue tax, that would have to go before the voters of Universal City?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I want to know benefits if people are doing that, is that if for some reason that measure did not pass, the venue tax as it exists would not change. There would be a one year waiting period before you could try some other type of election. You could try the same thing over again or you could try some other combination. The key here is that you can repeal, reduce by election if you combine it with something else. There's actually like a third option, which does not involve too great at the same election. And that is that you can span the definition of what your venue project is as long as you can make a logical explanation for why the newer extension is related to the old one. And one of the topics that we have talked about is the evaluation district. And that is the later two weeks of [inaudible] in terms of the [inaudible] and [inaudible].
Council, council could do that without going before the voters?
No.
Okay.
Because it definitely also [inaudible].
Thank you.
That's all that I have in particular for this section of legal discussion. Are there any questions about what are the results of the 2002 election, Eva?
Any specific questions about, about her presentation? Well, shall we, Mr. Vaughn?
Uh, I, I, okay. Um, thank you, Rose. I'm sorry I didn't catch your last name. I was gonna butcher it if I tried to repeat it.
That's okay. It's for me easy. Caneski, Polish version, can you see?
I might be able to do that. Uh, I guess the, the question I had is has there been discussion with the city over which of our parks might qualify as a linear park or open space? Or is it only certain ones? Is it all of them?
Well, staff that looked into that and [inaudible] some of the numbers that we can use venue tax for these types of cars, I first kind of [inaudible] that imagine [inaudible]. Actually, I believe we, uh, we went over our parks master plan with Clay, uh, all, all of our parks master plans, the ones we have in the [inaudible] and the future. I don't think there's anything that prevents us from using them at any of our parks.
I think that's right.
Okay.
And you have to also remember that our two biggest parks, Red Horse and UC Park, are also connected to Veterans Park, which is, you know, a 237 acre linear park. They just happen to be your stopping and starting point. It's the same with the Veterans Park, which is actually right on [inaudible]. There, there is a connection. And then also if we look at, um, most of the parks that we have, they also have walking trails, uh, within them as well.
Okay. So I guess in, in your opinion, could we do an ordinance or a resolution allocating the venue tax that we, that's already been approved between the golf course and another fund, say a golf, you know, parks fund?
Yes. I don't think we would [inaudible] the resolution as much as that's part of the national budget process. You have funds coming into a dedicated fund for the venue project. And parks, linear parks and open spaces are part of that definition. It's just a matter of your budget reflecting money going out from that dedicated fund to those departments, if you will.
I guess my concern is that it, I think I would prefer, and people that talk to me would prefer that there's a finite amount going to the golf course. And so if we put it in a resolution or ordinance, is there any teeth to that to say this portion? And we wouldn't be stuck with 1/8, I guess, if we passed, say, a resolution saying 1/16 is going to go to the golf course and whatever the rest is, is to our park fund or...
Absolutely. [inaudible].
Okay. And then I guess one more question for legal counsel is, and this is not, and your presentation's probably outside the scope of it, so feel free to pine if you don't want to answer it, but you know, we have this park land that we've purchased through bonds in the Northlake area that we're looking at selling. And so there's some discussion that if we sell it, then all of the money that we receive from that has to go towards parks. Is that kind of your understanding as well?
I don't think they have, they aren't involved with that. I don't think that's a fair question for them.
Okay. But so in theory, if that, if that theory is true, then we have a large bucket of money that potentially could become, and that might only be used for parks in the, in the short term.
Yeah, that council will have to look at when [inaudible].
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions for legal counsel, Mr. Turner?
Well, following up with this discussion we're on now, um, we budget so much a year for the parks. And this is all, you know, what if, what if? If we took a portion of that venue tax to put towards the linear parks, then the money that we originally have budgeted for the parks, what legally could we do with that as far as re-allocating it to another, say, general fund?
Right. That's exactly what you would do. So it would be just a push of those monies out to whatever council decided that they wanted to spend it on, whether it was on streets or capital purchases or technology or whatever it was that council decided they wanted to do with that every budget cycle.
And one other question, when we were talking about the money reallocated to the linear parks, that's part of the definition of the revenue of the venue tax anyway?
Yes.
That doesn't require anything to do with ballot? Just making sure.
It's been under counsel discretion to do that.
Okay.
Every year. And maybe back up.
I knew that, but we, we're getting into some different areas here and I just wanted to dot a couple of i's for myself, so. And I'll cross the t's later.
And then Mr. Vaughn's question from earlier tied into that, is that he would prefer to see something more formalized in writing resolution.
But that again, that's a discussion that we have all. She's saying you don't have to do it, but you can do it if you want. And it could be, and again, I'm surprised that one of the reasons that the funds proceeds before were not used for parks is because all the proceeds were needed to pay off the debt service. Remember the debt service ballooned towards the end? And so all of the venue tax was just used for regular repairs and maintenance and for the debt service. This is the first year really when you actually have the option as a council of using some of the venue tax proceeds for parks, for administrative transfer or whatever else. If you're advised.
Clay, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I wanted to add, I'll do that. Clay Benford of the [inaudible] wanted to add in that you're asking really a couple of questions within that one single question. One, can you use the [inaudible] purpose? And two, how would be documented to find potentially councils on a future basis? We would have to bring in your city attorney to see what scope and magnitude could you actually do and how much would be required to go through your formal budgeting process. But as Ms. Turner said, what would happen is you would use money from a dedicated source for a purpose that can only be used from that fund. And then that would free up money on the other side and now as you reach capacity because of the growing tax revenue, you are growing into flexibilities that speculatively, maybe that's why the ballot language was as broad as it was, an inception that maybe one day you could do stuff like this.
And just real quickly, one more question since, since we're on this already. By shoring up the language on there, you said we can or we don't have to, but it's up to the council. What's the, what's the, the good benefits about shoring up that language?
I would say the benefit from that is to provide certainty where the statute was, or the, the language before was ambiguous and up to your discretion. So if you exercise that discretion, you start building the factual predicate on which you make your decision. We determine that linear parks include these parts because of the attributes that Ms. Turner just described, and therefore that pairs with the authorization back in point two to justify these expenditures.
And I would think by shoring up that language, getting it all legal and, and making sure that, uh, everything is eyes dotted and t's crossed for future councils and everything that gives them a much stricter and more defined guidelines for...
Sure. And you figured that every time that you use an undefined term or an undefined concept, you create ambiguity. And that ambiguity remains until someone steps into the void. What you were doing in this scenario, again, because you've never done it before, you were exercising your discretion that [inaudible] was counsel and then memorializing that.
And then also remember that if it is done by a resolution or ordinance, that it doesn't mean that sometime a future council can't come back and revise that should be issues.
Sure.
I'll give you an example that I think everybody can understand. So recently, uh, passed our unbalanced policy, right? We didn't have, we discussed it for a while, what are we going to do, how we want to handle it. It's basically the same thing. You could call a venue tax use policy if you didn't want to do it as a, um, a resolution or ordinance, but all of mega [inaudible] on that.
Great.
So [inaudible]. So exactly. So we're talking about, we're talking about the funds and, and shoring up definite, and shoring up potential uses. It is for this council's use because in the future, if the council decides they want to go a different direction or want to interpret it differently, there's going to be very little to restrict them or prevent them from that. But by passing a resolution or ordinance separate from the budget process, then my concern would just be to ensure that the numbers in there are correct. Because if we're talking about going with a percentage, and I'm sure Clay [inaudible] may [inaudible] me on this one, but if you're, if the, if the budget of the city for that year doesn't meet that percent for what we're calling qualified expenditures, then the council or the city may find itself in a different position of, we're now dedicated and we can always go back and [inaudible] resolution ordinance in the same manner, but just adopting or using your budget process to identify what is an eligible expense when you combine potential administrative costs, but specific park projects, just allocating that annually in the budget, which is adopted by ordinance, gives that direction staff and you walk for the, for the upcoming year. And that is something that's reviewed annually, kind of what's been mentioned before about being able to review annually where those funds are going would be a great benefit to the council.
Oh, just, yeah, one more, one more. Since you said that too, and again, just to clarify it for me, probably everybody else has a few steps ahead of you, but I want to make sure for the future discussions. When, uh, when Councilman Vaughn was talking about putting in writing a, a specific amount, like a dollar figure versus a percentage of whatever is made that year, you might not be able to, if you put in a dollar percentage, you might not be, there might be some years where because of budgeting and the way things come in, you might not be able to meet that versus keeping it as a percentage to where it's, whatever it is that year, that's what it is. Am I making any sense whatsoever? I am in my mind.
So I, I think that the example was like a 16.
Yeah, I think you're saying you wouldn't want to do a dollar allocation, but a percentage could, would be better, based on what you're saying, right?
Yeah, for, but that's exactly what I'm saying. Thank you.
So if, so if the city takes that amount out of the venue fund and says we passed a resolution or ordinance, we're going to dedicate 1/16 to those eligible expenditures and then the remainder, if those [inaudible] project delayed, you got to do extra [inaudible] for it took longer than we thought to get the project materials in or equipment or, or anything like that, then you're rolling it over into the next year. I think that would be my concern, but I'll, and I will leave that to the finance experts as far as how you're going to track and keep an account of that separate in part from anything else that's in your parks budget that is not falling under what we define our, 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 our terms to be.
I get that. Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Basically saying is it may not be in the best interest to hem yourself in, but to actually be more flexible and look at it as you're giving, that is what you decided to do, then you would need to ultimately change up our budget process and have that general discussion, um, prior to budget meeting to identify what council means would be an appropriate amount to take from the venue tax to put into parks and [inaudible].
Well, Ms. Turner, I think that you, you said it best to provide the flexibility with the certainty and specificity that Councilman Vaughn's looking for, a policy that is adopted by council that provides direction. And then you would, you would apply your typical financial conservatism, probably to build up a reserve fund over time to identify that O and M is paid for out of the general fund budget and capital improvement out of the, uh, the, the transfer. So you're not caught with a budgetary shortfall and we're going to model based off last five year average [inaudible] collections on a prospective basis and dedicate not more than X percent and Y percent for these particular purposes. And so if you do all of that, you provide, again, this is all new because you haven't had these flexibilities, then you modify the policy in a year if you're a little bit off, but you have a roadmap that you're starting to apply, um, to give yourself a search if you're looking for.
Ms. Caneski, Mr. Benford, I said that right, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
[inaudible] have a question when we [inaudible].
I'm done. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Buck, I think was next.
I'll yield my time to, uh, Mr. Goldsby, sir.
Mr. Goldsby.
Thank you all. First off, um, I really wish I was there because I would have jumped in about five times, but it seems like every time I was ready to jump in, y'all answered, y'all basically reached, uh, or answered my question immediately. So, um, I'm really good, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Uh, well, actually, actually, I like the, the idea of the, of, of, you know, 20 years ago, there, the, the council is telling us that it was kind of ambiguous as far as the, the language that's in it because it allows us to use it on our park system. Had they not done that, had they been very specific and hemmed us, hemmed it in, we would have been in a much different situation, um, today. Right now, what I'm hearing is that we have this ability this year, because this is our first year without having to repay anything, but that we have this opportunity this year to use that money for other parks and, and even infrastructure to parks. So I'm, I'm kind of excited about where we're at. I know that, you know, that the idea of what Councilmember Vaughn is saying is that, um, we'd like to put a limit on what goes to the golf course. Um, that's, I think that's up for further discussion. I'm not sure how much of a limit I would like to place on what goes to the golf course. Because who knows what happens year after year? But again, we're, this is, this is brand new for us, having this opportunity. And what council said earlier is that the, that's what the budget session is for, is year after year, you update what you're going to do. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Do you want a quick comment?
Yes. One more question, just to, to more bullets in the dead horse. So in, uh, Ms. Turner's presentation, she had, one of the options she had was the parks budget, which was a million operations and 425 in park projects. And so you're saying all of our parks qualify. So would you say that all of the operational budget and all the park improvements of our existing park probably not new one? I'm guessing, I don't know. But that could be venue tax eligible.
It's legally permissible.
I said yes.
Legally permissible.
Okay. Right. Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Caneski, Mr. Benford, I, I echo the...
Ms. Kaneski, Mr. Benford, I echo the comments from my fellow council members. Thank you for coming out tonight. Do you have the original ballot language as it appeared in 2002?
I don't have any more presentation. No, this is in the last presentation.
Admittedly, I should have copied it down and had it available. Perhaps while you look that up, I would like. Is there any way that we could put, display it on the screen or maybe you could just read it out for everybody? It's fine. Would you mind reading it for the group, Ms. Kaneski?
I would be pleased to. Adoption of an additional one half of 1% local sales and use path to be used by the city to reimburse the cost of the municipal golf course and conference center to provide for funds for financing of said project, to provide for open spaces for public use in the city of Universal City, Texas. Based on linear parks and improvements, the payment and reimbursement from municipal conference center and golf course, including related infrastructure designated said project as required by Chapter 334 Texas Local Government Code as purpose of financing the venue project.
Thank you, ma'am. Could we use our sales tax revenue to pay for all of those rough orders of magnitude that you presented? General, I'm sorry, general revenue taxes. Could we use money from the general revenue fund to pay for all of those items that come from sales tax, not from ad valorem property tax? Understanding that we can't use ad valorem property taxes to fund anything related to the venue. Could we use the money from our 2% sales tax that is designated as coming from the general fund?
For what? You mean on a pay-as-you-go basis?
Yes, sir.
So you would have.
For instance, I'll give you an example. If the golf, if the golf course and event center said that they would like to build that pro shop and golf cart and they wish to have an allocation of $1.9 million, I think is what, 1.8, 1.9 million dollars, could council approve an allocation from our general revenue sales tax in order to fund that pro shop and golf and cart barn?
I would say on a pay-as-you-go basis, yes.
Very well. Could we also pay for the parking lot improvements?
Yes, all of those are owned by the city and they're all, the provision is that you would not be able to use that.
Very well. I'd like to read a paragraph from the Hoffman history. Certainly not an authoritative source, but it's a very well-done source of historical information about Universal City. It's where I took all my history lessons from for the first year of my time on council. The golf course, for various reasons, this is from 2002, didn't generate the money expected, yet the bill still had to be paid. The council swallowed deeply and then went to the public to ask for a half-cent sales tax increase to cover debt service and principal interest payments for the course. The half cent could mean an extra $360,000 a year. The voters obliged in a surprisingly low turnout for so contentious an issue by a margin 316 to 146. While you say that, and I'd like to, I'd like to add a little bit of context here about my perspective on all of this. I support the golf course. I want the golf course to get the pro shop and the cart barn. I want to add potentially the wedding venue. I want to get the carpet redone. I want to remodel the kitchen. I see a difference, however, in the residents' eyes between perfectly legal, defensible and appropriate wording in the way that we are allocating this money. I don't think it's an argument that the principal reason for initiation of that venue tax in 2002 was to repay the bonds that were issued to fund the construction of the golf course. That was the principal reason and with whatever money was left over because the golf course wasn't even funding its own operation, much less repaying its debts. So council went to the residents and said, we would like to allocate a half cent towards the operation of the golf course and the repayment of the debts. The reason that I asked council two weeks ago to support adding this discussion onto the agenda for this evening is that I believe there is a difference between perfectly legally defensible and asking the residents for their approval to continue allocating this as a venue tax. If we were to reallocate this to the general revenue fund, we could absolutely continue funding the golf course. But we could also look at several other priorities that are possible within the city. We could still fund the linear parks. We could still fund all of those other projects that we've discussed here without having to look at different ways to manipulate our accounting of how are we going to legally, defensively argue that we can spend it like this as opposed to simply putting everything in the general revenue fund and then asking council to set its priorities for funding the city's operations over the course of the next fiscal year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Again, any other specific questions of councils, of our councils? Okay. All right. Thanks, guys. All right, again, we have, this is a purpose that's even used, is definitely discussion. So there's a couple of our council people I haven't heard from. And we can continue the discussion. Ms. Holman, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, I guess to answer like Kim Turner's actual questions that were in this slideshow. She asked, can we accomplish anything we want without having to go to the expense of an election? And my personal opinion is no. I just believe that the residents should get a vote and they should get a say in what they want to do because I feel like it's bigger than the city council's decision. My, I'm not anti-golf course either. I don't think anyone is. I think I, I like Councilmember Buck's idea of putting it in the general fund or one eighth goes to the golf course and three eighths goes to the general fund. I like the idea that that money is a little bit more fluid and earmarked because while, yes, we can sit up here and say, well, we'll have flexibility and then we can put it towards linear parks if we want or whatever. But I've sat on council, I've watched council for a couple of years. I know these people and how they vote and I just feel like they're always going to fund that golf course no matter what. And so I think that's unfair to the residents. They won't get a say at all. It will just always go towards, these are the things we want for the golf course. And I feel like that's really unfair. Watching budget season, very rarely does someone bring something up during budget season and say, no, I don't want this in the budget. I'd rather have this. So for me, I think that we can't do this without the residents say. And if the residents decide they want the full venue tax to go to the golf course, awesome. But I think they should get a say and I think my preference would be to move it all to the general fund so that everyone gets a fair slice of the pie. And that way, when we discuss whether we want to fix the cart barn or whether we want to have a bridal suite or whatever, we can pull that from the general fund as opposed to pulling it from a venue tax. So that's basically where I lay on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I lay slightly differently. I support the golf course. But I also appreciate the fact that this is the first time that we've had the opportunity to even allocate this money. It's always had to go pay for debt. We've never had the flexibility to discuss where else the money could be allocated. And each year, the sitting council would have the ability to consider what the needs of the community are, where this money could be allocated and not have it go straight to the golf course as it always has. There's flexibility that's already exists in the language and that the people that have elected us and have said, we trust you to make these decisions, we can, on an annual basis, help allocate where that money is spent. Knowing that if it is spent someplace else at one of our parks within the language, that that will free up money for other projects. So I think that the flexibility exists as it stands right now. It's the first time we've ever had the opportunity to make those, have those discussions and make those changes. And I would hate to rush into a decision. We always can take this back and vote on it later. I don't think there's any need to vote for it. I think the flexibility is there. You've got council that's helping to guide those decisions. And I think the people have trust in the council to make those choices.
Okay, let me weigh in a little bit here. Austin has no idea what they want to do with property tax. It's, it just started their second session. I think my personal opinions were a little bit premature in trying to make a decision now. If Austin can't even make, decide what they want to try to do because that will clearly affect municipalities. There's no question about it. One is Homestead exemption, one is having, this is Attorney General and Governor, they don't agree. The Senate and the House don't agree. That's why they're back in the second session. I'm just afraid that if we make a decision now on what we would like to do, basically we have next week, as we start this budget cycle, if you want to entertain some of that discussion, I think that's very, very appropriate. I just, I think we're all in agreement that the course is critical. It's an asset. We have to find creative ways to support it. If we continue on right now, remember, this next year, this 2023 is already allocated, correct? Okay, we're looking at 2024 and beyond. So I would caution us to be very careful in trying to come up with something that council believes that they want to do now when we still have plenty of time to look at it. And I know we've beaten this together and I think a lot of the discussion has been very helpful. This is, as Mr. Patrick says, the first time you have a chance to look at it where it's not been used to pay the debt. So we do have some very, very, very potentially good options available to us for every one of us. And we all have our own personal feeling on how that might want to be allocated. And that's what we're here for. We're here to have intelligent discussion and make that decision as a council. And I strongly support all of that. If you have one of my personal opinion, I think we have the wherewithal here with our staff and with legal counsel to make those decisions without needing to go to the voters. If we decide we want to, that's fine too. I just personally think that we have the ability now when we can look at this venue tax as, since we're not paying off the debt, we now have a way to look at potentially reallocating it where we don't have to get approval by someone else to do that. So I mean, that's my humble opinion on where we stand right now. But I'm just very, very cautious about making any decision, any action on behalf of this council when we don't even know what Austin's going to do. I think that's critically important for us to know what's going to happen there. And I don't know when that's going to happen. I don't know when it's going to happen. So that's where I stand right now. I totally agree with the fact that we have all kinds of latitude now. We have plenty of opportunities to take a look at what we want to do with this money. And it's not, it's not small change. And now we know we have the ability to move within the system to allocate this. There's just, there's just too many, too many variables that I don't think we should be overly ambitious to try to do something right now. I think we have plenty of time to make this decision. We've got a full year already with it set. Yes, we have plenty of needs. We have plenty of needs in all places around our city. All places around our city. So there's, there's my humble opinion for you all as where I stand. I think we need to be very careful and cautious about waiting till we find out what Austin's going to do and then we can take it from there. Yes, Mr. Vaughn?
I just like to kind of, I still feel like we should be working towards a solution because I think we're kind of split here. I think we have, this is my sense, but I think we have three council members that are interested in calling an election, three that maybe aren't interested in calling an election. So we were kind of divided and I think they've presented us with an option where we could both win if there's a compromise. And one of those could be split into venue tax into it, some to the golf course, some to the parks fund through an ordinance that has some teeth on it that frees up money for the general fund that we can use for whatever that we want. That also protects us from Austin a little bit because then if Austin does something, it's going to impact our general fund. It's not going to impact the golf course. So that's where the golf course would.
It could clearly get warm up big time.
Right. And that would hit our general.
Yeah.
So that's where we would need that extra flexibility. So I think that's something that I would support working towards. If we work towards some kind of ordinance that had a split, a percentage split that maybe we could all agree on, then that would help us to some extent. Because whatever we pull out of the general fund into this separate new dedicated park venue tax fund would not be for the golf course per se. We could have a portion that stays in the golf course and that's something that we could discuss and hammer out and something that like stays for parks that would free up money from the general fund to help other things. And so I would like to see if my council would be interested in exploring that further.
I have a question about what you said.
Yes, please, ma'am.
So, okay, but if you do that, if you say like one eighth is going to go towards the golf course and three eighths is going to go towards the parks, then you have to put all that money in the park though? Is that what we're saying? Like then all that money would have to go towards parks?
It depends on how much we, how, whether, I'll get to Megan. I'm going to, I'm going to put my turtleneck on. So it depends on what we do. Do we do a resolution? Do we do an ordinance? Is it just a budget allocation that we do on an annual basis? That would be, that would be the only real teeth to it. But it would have to go to parks because there's really only two options now is parks and golf. And then however. That will, that would be something that the golf course venue tax would pay. So if we give them an eighth, then maybe that eighth could pay the admin transfer if it wants to. But then whatever we put in parks fund would be for the parks. But that would essentially get you free money because it's all general fund. So you can't spend on anything. Because if we're already spending this much on parks every year, a million dollars,
I got you.
Then moving that to another fund gives you a million dollars in general fund that you now have to spend on anything.
Then I support that. I think that's a good, I think that gives the residents a little bit of that comfort that they would like, that it's not just all going to the golf course and it earmarks some money aside that it's not just for the golf course and it's a guarantee for them as opposed to it just being, well, yeah, council's going to make sure that, you know, we can maybe do this instead. Instead, this makes sure that this amount is going to the golf course and the rest is going towards something else, freeing up that general fund. So I support that.
Okay, good. Let me get, Mr. Goldsby, did you have something there?
Oh, I, am I muted? Not, um, I liked what Councilmember Vaughn had to say. My concern still is, is that we would hamstring ourselves. So I'm happy to go down that road because I think he's, I think he's definitely on to something. This is our, this is our first year to not have to pay back this loan. So I'm excited to see where it takes us. I agree with him that this is a good, that this is a good idea to to get something down. I'm not sure what you mean by teeth, honestly, as far as more of a directive or a direction to push us versus something that says, oh, heck no, you can't do that because that's going to be, that would be 12% of this budget and I know you needed it, but we're not going to do it. So I am a little curious as to how that part goes. If any of that makes sense, I'd love to hear a reply to that. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I refer to back, everybody talking tonight on, seems to be heard. Everybody had something fantastic to say, got a little bit out of everything. And I've been somebody, since we have Bear as the new mayor pro temp, it seemed like only yesterday I was elected to this council and now I'm the old man, you know, the elder on the council. We talked about this thing a lot. And I talked to a lot of people about the golf course and the venue tax. As a matter of fact, up to about a half an hour ago, I'm still getting, I'm still getting email as far as on views of, you know, what to do and what not to do. And a lot of it is, when I first started out, I was totally against touching any of that money. Period. But as time goes on, we listen, we have, we get together. We work together, as Mrs. Earl would say. And we all want the best for the city. We just have different ways of getting there. And I, you know, once I started seeing the dollar signs and everything else, I even got on board with being able to reallocate.
got on board with being able to reallocate these funds, and be able to come up with something that, when I was elected, as I, as everybody, all these, every council person says, when we're elected, we want to represent all the people. And that's what I want to represent, is all the people, not just some of the people. And I have a lot of people that are letting me know, you know what, well, we elected you and the council to do a specific job. We are trusting you with this city in the future, and the vision of the future, and this is, you know, this is something that not only do we, you know, have the power to, that we're elected to do, doesn't need to go back to the voters, we have everything we need right here to make responsible decisions, year after year, even, even Mr. Edwards, you know, you and I don't agree on things all the time, but you, the council should make the decisions, the right decisions, being smart, and you're absolutely right about I don't believe this is anything that needs to, we just, we need to do our job as councils be, we need to do our job, put our heads together, and come up with something that's mutual, a mutual decision that is beneficial for everybody in the city for now and in the future.
I feel like we're trying to do, right? Like, we've been trying to do this for four meetings now, like, can we get there? That, I guess that's the residents, like, can we, can we come to an agreement tonight? Can we come to an agreement?
Yes, we can.
I mean, that's my hope, like.
Yes, we can. But I'm also somebody.
Sorry.
Well, there's no, there's no coming to an agreement tonight, this is a discussion. But, but yes, we can. We're all smart people up here, and we can do what's good for the benefit of the city. Now, what number that's going to be, we might have to have other discussions on there. As far as rushing things, I think that is, again, that's just short sighted. I lost my train of thought there. Representatives, as Mr. Hill said, representatives should represent. That's what we were voted in to do in this particular, and what Ms. Irwin came up with, if you want to go fast, go alone, if you want to go far, go together, and that's exactly it. I would hope that this council would have vision of the future, and not just what's going on right now, and what vital source that venue as the golf course, the convention center, the importance it has to this city for the future. We need to do it right, we need to come out with some out of the, out of the box thinking, but it's not anything we can't do, it's nothing we haven't done before, and that's what we are tasked with doing. So to answer your question, Ms. Bowman, as far as what are we going to do, we need more discussion. My whole thing is, this whole thing we brought up tonight, whether we're going to end up bringing it to a vote for getting out on, for a vote with the public down the road and getting verbiage for that, and that's something that I don't think we need to do, we need to take care of it up here. Let's all have a say with you. Mayor, thank you. Okay. Ms., yes, ma'am?
Real quick for clarification, when you're talking about adopting an ordinance, I think that was, are your question, the budget is an ordinance, and the budget is an ordinance, council passes every year and amends every year as needed throughout the year, depending on the needs and the costs that have come up. So are you asking about that separate from part come policy, or would that be an ordinance you would want to see in the future in addition to a policy that's separate from the budget ordinance?
I would say separate from the budget, because I think the budget's a one-year expiring ordinance, is that correct? So after one year, it would only revert back to its original purpose, I would assume.
So any ordinance you adopt can be repealed?
Sure.
By any council?
Sure.
At any point in time? So are you, so, I feel like you're attributing more longevity to an ordinance separate from the budget, just because it doesn't have a termination date like the budget ordinance?
Correct, and I, I'm just attesting to how hard it is to get anything through the council, and so if we pass an ordinance, it would take a pretty good movement to try to get that changed. If it was a point in place ordinance, not a one-year expiring ordinance, then you'd have to get four members to agree to even discuss it, and then another four members to agree to change it. So I think you would have a little bit more teeth, and that's what I would support more so than the vice ordinance.
You can do that in a policy, when all of them, so you can do that, like, in the fund balance policy, it does take a majority of the council members to agree upon there?
As long as it's a requirement, then I would be fine with that too.
I see, yeah. And one of the reasons we're bringing up the whole issue on the ordinance is, and I apologize for having it, it's separate from the rest of you, is that you have to, if you start down your budget process and you have a certain amount of funds that went to the venue project, and a certain amount that you put to your general admin and to parks, and then halfway through the year, you decided that the golf course venue project maybe was doing well and was making money, you can still make your budget adjustment during the, anytime during the year, and say, okay, the golf course looks like it's going to make one, you know, we need this amount, so we'll make a budget adjustment and put more money towards parks. I just wanted to just remind you that you have that flexibility during the budget year as well, if in fact it looks like the venue project is doing well for you in a construction project or something with the portion that you left with the venue funds, and they need all of it for that year, you could decide what places for them, or if they'll reserve fund, because, you know, every project needs to have a reserve, and the golf course in the fund balance policy is required to carry a six-month reserve at some point, or you can adjust your general fund budget, specifically your parks budget, and put more money into the parks. I just wanted to remind you that you have that option as a council.
So that would be like what you're saying, like, what we talked about earlier today, like that 1.1 million that's in building maintenance for the golf course? You're saying we could take some of that money out and put it towards something else as a council?
The parks.
Or the parks, because we don't really have anything specifically earmarked necessarily for that huge lump sum of money?
Correct.
Okay. But then you have to have a council that agrees to do that.
Yeah, exactly. But according to his policy that he's asking for, it will probably require a joint vote in the house, and that would be a four-year vote. So you have flexibility at each budget cycle, and then you have flexibility to amend your budget as you go through your budget.
Just speaking of the budget, the weekman tonight.
Of course, that will be possible, which is a discussion we haven't yet had yet, and that is, you know, any improvements that you decide that you want funded and given time for the budget.
Right. And that's why the budget here, session next Wednesday, weekman today, is on. And I invite all of you to come in at times because it's really interesting.
So for the, one back, so those of all who looked at the budget that we began to go and we think all of that passed and that will, we've already built some expenses in there, and as Ms. Irwin pointed out, on the, the actual budget itself, we didn't know what to do with the venue tax, so we picked some voting and group that were priorities, and we funded those within the venue tax budget. But we did have 1.1 million dollars, we don't have any direction from council, so we don't know what to do with it, so we just lumped it in building projects, so it's just been out there. If you had incentives this evening for staff, or some direction for your staff, of what you would like us to do with that 1.1 million, we can have all of that adjusted before we get back to you next week.
Okay, but this is a discussion on venue tax, would that, would that be appropriate, Megan, to make?
Well, this, I think she's talking about the budget, the venue tax component of the budget.
Oh, okay.
So if you're giving staff directions, that you'd like to see some numbers crammed or some categories reallocated.
Or policies.
In your application next.
Yeah, I'm not sure we get, we get that all six.
Again, this direction, it's only a direction that's going to happen from this Wednesday to next Wednesday.
Right.
Knowing that we have 1.1 million dollars in the venue tax that is not allocated for anything, if in fact you have a number that you wanted to put towards parks and recreation budget, your staff would need just some direction now to make that adjustment before next week, and we would come back with a budget consideration.
Okay. Mr. Goldsley?
Oh, thank you. Given that our language, if the venue tax refers to streets and utilities, that access a linear parks and things like that, is, could that 1.1 move in that direction?
So what street do you need done, Ms. Irwin?
That's a great, that's a great question for Randy.
Yes, so we don't have a lot, we may have an entrance that goes into our park, but they're not necessarily what we're working on at this point. If you're actually thinking that you're going to do a street that just happens to be out in front of the park, that I don't think is particularly permissible. If you're talking about repaving the road that goes from the entrance and circles around all the baseball diamonds in the back, that is a related destruction, but not just a street that happens to be out parks.
Okay, I was hoping that it was related to streets that access the park, not just the park streets, because not a lot of our parks has streets, right?
No, go ahead, Clark.
Yeah, I think that you have a, all of this is based on a rational basis as to what you can use to justify the expenditure. There has to be a nexus, there has to be a relation, the further you get, the more ambiguous that nexus becomes. At what point is this council no longer comfortable that the expenditure is related to what was actively included in the ballot? You know, things that are near in close proximity, so certainly I think would be fine, particularly if it is specifically related to access to Greszniere. I think that you could certainly make an argument that says every street in town is somehow connected to the entrance to the park. I would be comfortable with that.
Does that answer your question, Bear?
I'm hoping for some clarification.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Facher?
Yeah, I was, I definitely support looking at establishing a policy of some sort to actually put some guidance behind it. One of the things that has struck me is that I don't think we're opposite, I don't think it's three to three. I think we need to look at, it's the first opportunity that we've had, this is a great discussion and dialogue. I know we have the guidance from the comprehensive plan that was presented a few years ago that might identify opportunities, that we could actually take input from the citizens in the community and allocate those funds according to what was identified as priorities by the citizens and then voted on by council. And I know we've discussed the possibility of doing another one that would give us more up-to-date guidance. And so I think we're gathering all of the information to really help us to make those decisions as we were elected to do. And I don't think there's a hurry to put it on the ballot, I think we are very empowered with the tools that we have available to us, and we just need to look at the information that's there and help, let that help guide us in our decisions.
Paul? Real quickly, if I'm talking about the direction, you've got the 1.1 million, I would suggest since it's something that's, that's been brought up, that would be important down the road, is putting that towards the, is it possible to put that towards the debt to the city from the golf course?
So we believe now that there is sufficient venue tax proceeds to cover the, like, 900 million dollar debt.
We're not going to that.
So we're going to come back and propose that we just pay that off and be done with that, which what we're really looking for, that's what I'm looking for, the stack type dues, for fiscal year coming forth next year, the 1.1 million dollars in venue tax that we have not identified for a specific project, is there a portion of that that you would like us to put toward parks and recreation budgets?
I think it, I'm sorry, I saw it before.
You're sure?
Yeah, I would, I would take with the discussions that we've had as far as possibility down the road of taking this venue tax and putting some towards the linear parks, and that would be a beautiful place to start with the 1.1 portion of.
Right, okay, so I talked a little bit about the golf course for upgrading the area here, so obviously we know that that is going to call, requires some engineering plans and construction drawings and utility utilities. I don't know how much that's going to be, maybe Mr. Goldsley can weigh in on that, I said that to you.
A lot.
About 15% of the estimated construction project, which this couple of times is about 500,000 to 600,000. If the council wants, we can leave 600,000 in that particular project in order to start on those plans in fiscal year 2024, and then when we get to budget year 2025, have a better idea of how to make the improvements to the golf course based off construction plans, not just based off somebody's, you know, when I last hired this project or this time. I'm still an option out there for you, understanding that you may not be taken out of your consideration.
That's also, that's also a good idea too. I mean, I'll, you know, I may know, everybody knows my position on discussions we've, I've had with other people in the city, and I would like to see money spent on, excuse me, money spent on the golf course as far as making it a fantastic venue event for, and a place that a lot of people outside of the city, a destination spot. So when I look at, when I look at the numbers, that it's kind of like, eh, the pro bono you got, I like the direction it was going, but then it says, a new building for the golf carts and, and the.
Pro shop.
And the pro shop. I'm like, oh, yeah, that's nice and everything, but I want to see a nice new venue, something that's going to bring in, so, and in other words, that's great, but I want to look beyond that. I want to look at something that's going to be bringing, a lot of people say, yeah, how many people from Universal City actually use the golf course? Well, I know it's, 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 you know, it's a small percentage, but the golf course that the Universal City has, and the venue that it has, is to bring people from outside of the city into our city to spend money. And for a destination spot, like I said, I like to start where these plans are going, but I want to see, I want to see more. And so I think that's a good start of being able to come up with those plans, and us is being able to work out a way of being able to, to support that financially in the future. That's all, I'm sorry, I took more time than I needed. It's okay, go.
I don't think we'll probably be able to give you a number tonight, unfortunately. But what I would propose is if there's a way that if we could draft a policy, and we could all come back the next meeting and maybe give you a number at the next meeting about maybe what we would think about the allocation for next year, or what the allocation should be going forward. I think part of, part of my issue about giving a number now is because I don't know that I'm sold on the plans that you have for the golf course. I, I want to support the golf course and the event center, but I don't know that I want to, it seems like we're tailoring it for the weddings, and I think that's not necessarily the direction I would like to see it go, and maybe the rest of my council would disagree with me, I don't know about that, but I think I would want to see that vision, where we're going before we say, let's spend 500,000 on the engineering. So what is, what is the ultimate goal, and how are we going to get there? And my preference would be, we come to an agreement on a percentage split, that then the city would work with that percentage that they've been allotted with some kind of, to it from the council that's probably not going to touch it, and then in the future, to figure out how you would use that to finance those projects that you would like to have on the, on the golf course. So I think I've heard four, at least four, that are maybe amenable to a policy or considering a policy.
Which would include a percentage rather than?
Right, a percentage of how much do we want to go towards parks, and how much do we want to be for the golf course, and maybe the city can give what their estimate is, what they would need from the percentage to try to accomplish some of the goals they'd like to do over the next few years.
Would that help as a direction for you as we finalize what we're going to do next week?
Well, okay, so the policy won't be next week.
No, understand, understand.
That's why we're hoping to get some direction, so that the staff's going to have to go back and maybe change to the budget, that you do it during a budget work session when everybody's here, and at that particular meeting. But if you do it, have a policy in place, then it won't actually affect the 2024 budget up until the time when we come back, and I think it's late August, maybe it's early September.
Of next year.
When you're actually approving the budget and voting on the tax rate.
Of next year.
So for us, it's really hard to go back in and figure out what the tax rate's going to be. We don't know what that number is going to be for the budget. We don't know what that number is going to be for the budget itself.
But if you said, we think a third, let's say a venue tax would support us for the next five years, and then we could say, okay, let's do that in the budget now and bring us back a policy for a third, and then we can all approve that, assuming we all agree, or whatever that narrative is.
Sure, option is, again, always trying to be a flexible model in this council, for the future council. I know we talked about the fund dollar policy, Mr. Buck was in favor of a range. Maybe it's a range 25% to 35%, something like that. We could do that too. Okay, we'll leave the blind side and the opposite grab a chance on that.
Okay, and that's what we'll be doing next week? Yes, ma'am?
Because I think, yeah, I think that's where I'm struggling too, is when I looked at the budget and where we're at for the golf course, it appears that, you know, our number one and the thing that we make the most money off of is golf. Like, that's our big thing, it's a golf course. So I have a hard time too with some of these improvements, like I'm all for expanding the parking lot and for some of this, but I'm not for all of it, so it's hard to hash out like how we're going to do that now if we haven't even discussed it at budget season. Does that make sense? So I'm like, how are we going to hash this out when we haven't even hashed it out yet through budget season? What we do want to fund, if there's things that we don't want to fund. And I, I think that's why kind of it all comes back to me in the sense of like, it's really, really hard to change a budget once it's already out there. And it's really, really hard for council members to be like, well, I don't want to do this, I do want to do this, but not everyone's going to agree. That's why I think having that fee of this has to go towards that, this has to go towards that kind of forces the golf course to make some harder decisions as opposed to just giving the golf course everything it wants. Because this is already, not that these numbers are accurate, but this is already like $4 million worth of improvements to the golf course in the next 10 months in total, so that's.
No, 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 that's the construction period.
Okay.
That's not the time period.
Okay, so it could be longer.
Actually, three years from now.
Okay.
Which is a plan, is that if you want to start construction, that is the time period.
Okay, construction finished. So that's my thing is like, that's a, it's just a, it's a lot of money and it's hard to rein that back in with just your council. So like I said, if there's a way, you don't think tonight we could come up with a number that we could just all agree on that would be like 25%, 35% for the golf course and then the rest goes towards parks?
Or we could do this, you don't give me a number and I'll just split it.
Okay, I would even be okay with that.
I think that's probably more feasible.
And I'm talking about the 1.1 million because we know that, yeah, the jack will be 1.7, but we've already identified specific critical uses for some of that. With the 1.1, with a non-identical use, if you wanted, I could just split it and take, what would that be, 550,000, put it in the parks and then maybe 50,000 from budgeted in the general fund. And then when we get to the budget session, then you can have the decision on how you want to use it or if it's sufficient.
I would be for that.
I would back you up on that.
Wow.
I, I think you have a consensus that that's the way to go.
Good.
I think that's going to be the easiest way presented when we meet, when we meet with the budget next week, for sure. Can we agree with that? Sure? Okay.
To me, I think direction on a policy. I mean, I, I think it's great for next week, but yeah.
We're still working on policy, but we already know that the budget process isn't going to start before the policy is ever reviewed. And then I have to make the assumption when we put the policy up that you all are going to agree on it, which doesn't necessarily always happen.
I think Councilmember Buck was here before and said that he really wants to vote. And I think that might, I would like to see that happen at some point. Maybe we can wait till after budget season and we can take a vote to split it. But I would like to have some kind of consensus that we are, we all do want to see a policy. Let's bring it back and we can discuss it and iron that out, maybe separate from the budget.
I'm moving to a policy, I'm just asking for some direction for next week's budget cycle.
Fifty-five.
Let's start with fifty-five.
Let's fifty-fifty.
Okay, I'll jump in only because you brought me in, Mr. Vaughn. I don't know that a policy is necessary. We do this via the budget process. When we say, we as the city council in allocating the money for the budget, we approve a certain amount that's going to go to parks, a certain amount that's going to go to the golf course. And that, those funds that can be used from the proceeds from the venue tax will be used from the proceeds of the venue tax, freeing up the other monies into the general fund. And then those projects that cannot be funded using the proceeds from the venue tax will then come straight from the general revenue, proceeds from the sales tax and from the agglom property taxes. I don't, I personally don't support a policy that says we will allocate this much to the golf course, we will allocate this much to the, to the, to the parks. I think it's unnecessary. That comes in the form of our budget decisions up here allocating the money as it is appropriate on a year-to-year-to-year-to-year basis. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Goldsby, do you have anything to add?
I want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, you sure did. I'm sitting here trying to put my thoughts in order and that's going to take till next week. I, I, my problem is, is I can't see Councilmember Vaughn to read his body language to understand exactly how happy he is with the, where we're at. Because I always look to him when we talk, start talking numbers. So I just can't see him.
You want me to walk over there and turn on the TV?
Here, are you on the next thing?
Chinese fire drill at city council meeting.
Yeah, I, I know, I've got this. No, I, I, I'm not thinking, I'm not sure if we're talking about a percentage that you have to spend. I, I'm thinking it's a range. I like what, where you were headed with, it's a, it's a range of your, you know, anticipate spending between 25 to 35% is, is where I thought we were headed. I didn't know if you were, if you were saying that it's a, you're going to spend 35% of your budget. I don't think that's where you were headed, so I'm, I'm not sure exactly where you were headed with that.
Well, just clarify then, it's a split of the revenue coming in. So every venue tax dollar that comes in, 25 cents goes here and 75 cents goes here. And then it just accumulates in those funds. One would be the golf course fund and one would be a park, linear park fund. And so then you, we would, we would have however much is in there, we would spend that however we see fit in those funds.
And if, and if we're talking about a year that, where we wanted to upgrade the conference center, that, but we had ample funds in our linear parks, we're okay to, to move that money with council direction and the budget process to pay for an upgrade to the conference center, is that?
Well, as we said, if it was, if it was a policy, then council could override the policy and say, we're going to do this instead by a majority vote. Yes, that would be possible. But I guess the goal would be to say, both sides will live between their, live within their means of what we've allocated.
Yeah, I like, I mean, I, I, I like where we're headed. I like this, I like this direction a lot because it is a, it is kind of what I, what you've, where your prayer was going was, let's work together. And I'm, I'm happy to, I, I think we're headed in the right direction.
Okay, I think you, I think.
We all agree prayer works, so. Yeah, direction for next week's budget tackle. You all have your budgets. Do you want me to make an adjustment to the parks budget with venue tax? Yes.
Yes.
Want the 1.1 million?
Yeah.
Split it fifty-fifty for now and then we can hash it out.
And I'm looking at all of you.
The fifty-fifty. I think that's, I think we've already come to, basically came to that conclusion. All right, we got it.
We're talking about 1.1 million.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay, you got your direction, Kim?
Yes, I have the direction.
Okay, all right. All right, everybody, it's 8:30, anything else?
I wouldn't cast them in comments or?
Oh, they're closing this out. I'll see, this concludes our business session this evening, so I'll turn it over to the city manager. Hold your comments.
Very good.
Thanks, Clay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. If you remember that we sent it out to you to assist in a look at it. Some of you've already made appointments. If you need to make any of that, obviously Christine, Regina, and I can make us available to you. And we're just looking forward to a good, robust discussion on the budget.
Very good, thank you, Mary. Thanks, Kim.
I'm sorry, one more thing. I did want to thank both Regina and Sam, they're in the back of the room. For one, getting the on-horses ready, ready for the city and for making sure that the city was all over the neighborhood and for doing all the running they did up and down the riverwalk to get that video and that photo done. I think we don't set weight.
Good job, bro. It pays to have some young people on staff, right?
And very quickly come down in one day with that, which is a surprise. Hope to make sure that we acknowledge their efforts and their talents.
You bet. Thanks, Kim. Awesome. Okay, Phil, starting with you now.
Mayor, I'd just like to say that we met with Ms. Turner, Ms. Green today to go over the budget. We got a lot of our back-based questions answered. And we're hoping that this next meeting won't be a marathon like last year. And so we've asked Ms. Turner to have everybody here to answer questions, but not do a round robin presentation. So if that, if that works for you guys, I hope that works out. And if you have questions, I would recommend that you ask them so we can try to get, focus on what we want to talk about, what our questions are, what we might want to change and not have a round robin presentation. And then lastly, you know, Ms. Thomas got here tonight and spoke about her, her issue. And I think it's something that we should consider. Just to give you a little bit of background for those who aren't familiar, there's a lot in front of their property that has fairly tall weeds with some vermin in it. There's a, our current ordinance for the property maintenance code says that that property has to mow 100 feet around all edges. But the fire marshal has overridden that and said it needs to be 25 feet. And that's a separate paragraph in our ordinance that allows him to have that authority to do that. And currently they don't have, so I've been told, a way to appeal that process because they're not the property owner, they're the adjacent property owner. And so I'd like to see that be our, our future agenda to consider maybe removing that fire marshal exception on the code so that the 100 feet would stay in place and it would prevent some of the issues that they're having. Is there any interest in discussing that? I would only caution, sorry if I made a mistake, Mayor. I would only caution, what second, second and third order effects would that have for other properties in Universal City that enjoy the same large lot aspects and would then be required to mow or clear a lot of trees, for instance? The property at the corner of Athenian and Center Brook comes to mind right off the top of my head. The property formerly affectionately known as Joey, that's as Junkie Joe's comes to mind. Would that then have the effect of requiring those other property owners within Universal City? The one adjacent to the animal hospital, the flight exception, or what would we call it? The, the exclusion zone for the flight possible crashes? What would that do to those other properties and require them to, to do the same things and potentially have to cut down a bunch of trees and clear the property in order to, in order to be in compliance with that? That's the only thing I would say.
But why tree?
Well, I, I.
You can't have construction on this.
Yeah, could be half a discussion, I guess, yeah, I guess, okay. Go on, we're in a discussion.
Okay, we can have a discussion.
That would be, that would be, okay. Okay. I'll hear Ms. Turner on that. Bear, Bear, let's go with you, so we don't forget.
Is that, do you want that on the case or exhibit?
Yes. I, I, I was going to, through my presentation, bring that up. So yes, I'm pulling that as well, if that's what you're looking for.
I think that consensus is to do that. Okay, Bear, I don't want to forget you, so let's put you up next.
All right, thank you. The only thing I would ask is that the fire marshal be present for that discussion.
Yes.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, that, the River Parade is fantastic. I remember whenever I was on that parade, that was so much fun. I'm so jealous that y'all got to do that. It looked like a great time. Thank y'all for putting that together, that was great. Second, thank y'all for allowing me to Zoom again. And I want to thank all those who reached out with the well wishes and prayers for my, for everything I just went through. And I am doing great, just can't sit down for very long. So thank y'all for your patience with me.
All right, thanks, Bear. Appreciate it. Ashton?
So budget workshop is on the 12th, but Councilmember Vaughn and I are going to have a guide your council July 9th, July 9th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Sorry, I'm counting. It'll be Sunday. We're going to have a Sunday before the Wednesday meeting like we always do. So Sunday from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., we're going to discuss that budget. We're going to hash through it. I'm going to make it as simple in terms as possible. We did meet with Christine and Ms. Turner. That way we could get a lot of those questions answered for you guys. We're going to break it down a little bit more simple and then get resident feedback on what they would like to see in the budget, what they would not like to see in the budget. I implore everyone who's interested in budget season to come on Sunday. That way you guys can really have your voices heard and what you're interested in. You can also email me, council4@ucTexasgov, on your thing, on your opinion on the budget season. But I'm just asking anyone who's interested and wants to give feedback on the budget process, July 9th would be awesome so I could hear what you guys have to say. And I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had a great time on Sunday, the 2nd, and the River Parade. Thank you especially to Sam and Regina and Kristen for putting it together and organizing. And I know it's like herding cats. I know all the pain that you guys went through trying to get everybody on the same sheet of music. So thank you for doing all of that. Couple significant dates coming up here. I'd like everybody to know that today is National Graham Cracker Day. So when you get home, have Graham cracker, if you got one. A little more interesting, tomorrow is International Kissing Day. So those of you that have somebody to kiss, please, please do so. But also, we have Movies in the Park coming up on July 15th at the Universal City Park. Right after sunset, we're going to be watching Lyle Lyle Crocodile. Invite everybody out for that. I will be in person at the Budget Workshop on Wednesday, the 12th. I will not be here in person on the 18th. So I will request the ability to Zoom in. I will be headed to Colorado for my daughter's wedding, which is the Saturday following that. So thank you, Ms. Mayor, that's all I got.
That's a good part, Barry.
I think, I, I think so. She thinks so too.
Vaughn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too enjoyed the River Parade. And this is, this year, Regina got to stand for a little while instead of running around. And Sam, you're the man. You did a lot of runaround. You were real good at getting these things together. And I'll tell you what, you did some, you got some fantastic pictures out there too. So I just appreciate, and the city appreciates it too. There's a, the veterans, the personnel out there, everybody on the Riverwalk. It's just a fantastic event and, you know, we've been a part of it. We did miss you, Bear, we did miss you. That's something that I, I look forward to every year, and Kim, and I'm fantastic for the city and everybody all around. We did, we did bring up the thing with Ms. Thomas, which I wanted to further on. And yes, we do need the fire marshal there. You said we make sure we got him there. Everybody, and I, I want to say this sincerely, sincerely. Everybody that got up tonight for citizens to be heard, we, we all do hear you. But tonight was, I, I got a little bit from everybody that, that stood up. Again, I'm a real believer in, we all want the best for this city. We all just have little different ways of getting there. And the togetherness and the out-of-the-box thinking and everything we can get together is just going to make for a better future. So I really appreciate everybody coming up, always do, and thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Stan?
Thank you. I very much enjoyed being a part of the parade. Kudos to Sam and Regina and Kristen. They did a great job getting us corralled and it was a real honor to represent the city. And I know that people were excited to see anybody in the parade. We got lots of really positive attention. It was a great experience. I appreciate all the comments everybody made tonight. We do pay attention, we do hear. I appreciated all the emails that I got on the venue tax discussion. I think all of that is great. And thank you for letting us know what you think. We appreciate it. It really does make a difference. I wasn't going to bring this up, but because Councilman, Councilmember Bowman brought up the guide your council meetings, one of the things that I remember previous to being on council is Mayor discussing the fact that we don't talk about things outside of these meetings, that all of the discussion occurs here on the dais in front of everybody. And I am struggling, especially with this last weekend, I think, where there was three council members actually talking about the agenda in not an open meeting act. And I think we're just really going on precarious territory. And I just urge caution. I want to make sure that, you know, they. I want to make sure that, you know, they, anybody can email all of us. You can email us all the same thing so that we know what you are thinking, and we can have that information come to us. I just want to make sure that we're all getting the same information and we're not talking about the agenda outside of open meetings. There's a reason why that act exists, and I just urge caution. That's just my personal opinion, and I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank everybody for discussion this evening, and thanks to the attorneys for, for attending and giving their presentation. Kim, as well, for summarizing. I invite all of you to come to the Budget Workshop, which is next Wednesday, and it starts at?
Five o'clock.
Not 6:30, 5 o'clock. I want to make sure I got that number right.
Thank you so much.
But I appreciate everybody's participation this evening. That's, that is what council's all about, to listen to you all, and I appreciate your, your comments as well, sir, coming up.